Good evening, this is the regular scheduled meeting of the zoning board of appeals for Monday, August 25th of 2025. I call this meeting to order. Can we please have the roll, Sam- Samantha?
Chris Bilecki.
Here.
Don Bemis.
Here.
Clark Gruber.
Here.
Lisa Kupiaras.
Here.
Amy Nichols.
Here.
Randy Timmer.
Here.
Brandy Burrows.
Here.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, none. This brings us to item four, approval of the meeting minutes for our regular meeting on January 27th, 2025. It's a long time ago.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from January 27th, 2025.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, none. At this time, we'll open up item number five. Interested citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on items not on the agenda? Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Susan Shields. I'm at 777 North Shore, number five, here in South Haven. I don't know much about how this committee works. I'm interested in finding out more, but as a decades-long taxpayer and voter, I am concerned about the proposed zoning changes to 120 baseline. I understand tonight isn't a question and answer session, so I'll pose my questions as hypotheticals. With these proposed zoning changes, from residential to manufactured housing, I'm truly wondering who will benefit? Is it the city? Manufactured homes that are licensed by the state pay a fraction of the property taxes of residential homes, so that doesn't seem to benefit the city. Is it the neighborhood? A manufactured home community is overseen by Michigan State Commission, thus our city couldn't enforce local neighborhood standards. So this change doesn't seem to benefit the neighborhoods. Is it the often stated need for affordable housing in South Haven? My understanding of this proposal is that it's to be a seasonal resort, so that certainly doesn't benefit the population seeking reasonable rental housing. Back to my original question. For zoning, or planning, or city council to approve changing 120 baseline from residential to manufactured housing, I'd really like to know who benefits. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. If anyone else would like to be heard on items not on the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name and address. You'll have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Anne Pantalone, 777 North Shore Drive, number seven, and I'd like to talk about 120 baseline also. It's already zoned for many options. Without proving an error in zoning, the owner wants you to change what's already declared appropriate for that property by the planning committee. By changing the zoning to a trailer park, you will be allowing the developer, first, to pay lower taxes since trailers pay differently than homes, to go around the cap on short-term rentals, which the city has already decided should be limited, and South Haven will lose control over what will become an overcrowded piece of property. Park rules and estate agency will take over. The rezoning is not good for the future tax base, health, or safety of South Haven. Please do the right thing, and if you're involved in it, don't allow the rezoning of that piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, my name is Linda Albury. I'm also from 777 North Shore Drive. Before I make my comments, I did want to ask, do you know where 120 baseline is?
No.
You can't- cannot ask comments to the board, but you can use your five minutes how you would like. I would venture most of the board is aware of where that location is.
Okay, 120 baseline is the property on which the countryside nursing home was on 120. A developer purchased that property when it was zoned for residential. In the old planning document dated 2018, there was a clause in there that said, if that property were ever to be available, it is, I can't remember exactly the words, but it is deemed most appropriate for single-family homes to be consistent with the surrounding areas. For whatever reason, when that property went up for sale, nobody rezoned it, so the developer bought it under the old zoning, and as what was stated previously, he wants to change it to mobile homes. Doesn't matter if they're a five-bedroom or two-bedroom, it's still a mobile home, and they're going to pay $35 a year in a state fee instead of property taxes. And that's really what we're concerned about. The proposal is for 24 homes, five-bedroom, mobile homes, and that's going to bring a lot of people, and those fees that we're going to avoid collecting in property tax is not going to help us maintain the infrastructure for what needs to be maintained for that kind of volume of people, access to a very small beach, baseline road, traffic, all these different things. So, like Susan said, I don't really know how you guys work, but I would assume that if somebody along the line does approve this, you'll be hearing from a lot of people, including us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. If anyone else has comments not on items related to the agenda? Seeing none, we move on to item number six, unfinished business, of which we have none, taking us to item number seven, new business, 78 Officer Elections. Would entertain a motion or discussion?
I would, I could throw a motion out there to start. I would make a motion to elect Randy Timmer as chair and continue vice chair as Brandy Burrows.
Support. A discussion before we vote?
I think they'd do a good job, and they had some experience, and I believe there is some people who had that desire. I don't want to throw something on you.
It really does not matter to me.
Excellent. And as the Planning Commission representative, I can't do either of those jobs, so I'd rather, you know, pass it off to somebody else. Any other discussions?
I'm happy to serve however needed by the community. As I said, when we had our last elections, however, Don, Mr. Bemis was not at our last elections, and that's how I wound up in vice chair and in the hot seat tonight. And I think, given Don's experience, I would defer to him as nominee for chair or vice chair, and I would rather be part of the board and have Don in one of those roles, given his experience.
Well, if that was a discussion, then would you be okay if someone were to amend my emotion? Don, would you be okay with that, in the vice chair role? I don't want to give you something you don't want.
I would accept it.
Okay. So, I don't think I can amend my motion, but if somebody out there wants to amend my motion.
Is, it was supported, is that correct?
It was supported, yeah.
Okay.
So do we have to vote before I amend it, or no?
Well, I-
Theoretically?
I have a motion out there, and it's for Brandy, and Randy, and it's been seconded. I would think the appropriate thing to do would be amend the motion, vote on the amendment, and then vote on the motion.
Correct.
Okay. Then I move that we amend Mr. Gruber's motion to reflect Randy Timmer as chair and Don Bemis as vice chair.
Randy and Don, you're good with that? Do we have a second?
Second. Support.
Samantha, it's been moved and supported. Can we have a roll call vote, please? Bilecki?
Yes.
Bemis?
Yes.
Gruber?
Yes.
Kupiaras?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Timmer?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Motion carries.
No, well, that was for the amendment, is that correct?
That was for the amendment, so we need another vote on the amended motion, correct? So Samantha, can we have another roll call vote, please? Bemis?
Yes.
Gruber?
Yes.
Kupiaras?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bilecki?
Yes.
Timmer?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, thank you, and good example why we went the way we did. All right, so that brings us to item 7B, 713 North Shore Drive is seeking a dimensional non-use variance request. Kelly, can you fill us in on this application?
Sure. And pardon my voice, I've been under the weather and don't have a lot of it, so I'll do the best I can. Jeff Seaguard is here tonight on behalf of the property owners, the Michigander LLC of 713 North Shore Drive, and they've applied for two-dimensional variances in order to construct a new single-family home on the property. 713 North Shore Drive is a non-conforming lot. It is 4,965 square feet in the R1B zoning district, so a typical R1B lot would be 8,400 square feet, and this lot is irregularly shaped. It's got kind of an L shape in what is now the rear yard, rather than being kind of a typical rectangle. There is a single-family home on the lot now that has deteriorated, and that is why the property owners would like to demolish it and construct a new home in a similar footprint. The new home would have a footprint of 1,280 square feet and a proposed lot coverage of 30%, which is the maximum allowed in the R1B district. Dimensional variances are being requested in order to permit a rear yard setback of 17 feet instead of 25, and a south-side yard setback of 10 feet instead of 12. So tonight, the ZBA needs to hold a public hearing on this issue and review the request against the eight standards in the zoning vari- in the zoning ordinance to grant a variance. And as a reminder, any motion that you all would make this evening must state your reasons or findings for your decision.
Is the homeowner or builder here to speak on their application?
Yes, I am.
Would you like to come to the podium and state your name and address, and tell us a little bit more about the application, please?
Jeff Seaguard, Seaguard Builders, 3061 Pine Avenue, Grandville, Michigan. So, we're looking to rezone this property with a couple of variances for the one-side yard and one rear yard, which is stated in the application. The side yard setback actually has an easement to the adjacent property, which the LLC also owns, so it's not impacting a side yard of some other neighbor that has a house adjacent to it either. We're actually, with this rezoning request, maintaining a new front yard setback, which we weren't before, and also gaining, I think it's the north-side side yard, further than it was previously, trying to minimize the impact all the way around.
I think you- does the board have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. It's stated here that the property owner is Michigander Home, II LLC, in San Francisco.
That is correct.
Incidentally, the building is the Blue Shield Building in San Francisco. There are 107 LLCs listed at that address. None of them are this one. So, and furthermore, I also checked LLC business search under California Secretary of State. There is no LLC that seems to be this one. So how do we know this is the property owner?
So, I have an email from the owner that I just got. He was not aware that he needed to send a secondary email. He thought the signing of the application with my name on it would suffice. So Kelly has that in her inbox as well, from the direct owner. As we said, there's an LLC with lots of managers, lots of authorizations there. The owner didn't realize he needed to send the letter, which he just did. So we have that for the file.
That's good information. I'm still curious, though, about something calls itself an LLC and it's not listed in any records that I've found yet.
That unfortunately, I can't answer. I'm just the builder.
I understand that, too.
This, this company is, obviously, the owner owns many, many businesses, and he could use that address for a number of things, and it could just be a direct mailing to there and wield itself to another address.
Thank you.
Kelly, is the email he described from the owner adequate for covering the requirements for the application?
It is adequate. We've got the Michigander Home LLC listed as the owner of the property. We've got email documentation from, you know, other authorized signers for the property. We've got property transfer affidavit that shows this ownership, and, you know, we've got a signature from, from the owner on the application. So as far as we're concerned, the, the applicant is proper and able to apply.
This LLC is under private equity?
That is correct.
That's potentially the reasoning of, we don't know.
Correct. I'm not privy to all that information either. I've worked for these people. I've done the initial renovation of the property in front, and now I'll be doing the new build of this one. So I've worked with the owner multiple times.
Any other questions for the applicant from the board?
Just did think you had mentioned something about a rezoning. I think it's just a dimensional non-use variance.
That is correct. It's not a rezoning.
How we understood what you meant, it's tough to be up there on the, on the screen with all the cameras, because there's millions of people watching you now.
Right, right. We're really just trying to make it as small as possible to fit the footprint as close as we can. I do have, I do have one question. On the, on the current home that is there, you mentioned the new home would be less impacting. Do you know what the current setbacks are on, like, the, the two? So right now, I believe the original, I think I have the original, the new setbacks will be on the north side, 8.3 feet, 25.2 feet on the front yard, 10 feet on the south side, and then on the back, it's, there's a couple of different setbacks. Right. Part of it's at 32, part of it's at 17, and part of it's at 19. Okay, all right. Looking at the original, it looks like the original was closer to the lot line than the new proposed. It is. It is. I think the, the north side is closer to 5 feet. Yeah, okay. And we're certainly impacting the front yard setback a bit as well. Right, okay.
Was lightly touched on in the packet that there are foundational issues with this structure.
There are.
Is that something that you are able to speak to?
Was one of the main reasons why we decided to take it down. Well, several, but the main one was water infiltration. It's not, it's not, not set up to take on any kind of drainage around the property. There's a lot of structural cracks in the foundation, and all the staircases in the home are not even close to up-to-date code, and they just couldn't be fixed. There's no headroom. They're not wide enough, so it'd be almost impossible to fix them.
Any other questions from the board?
I do have one other question. Now, you stated that the, the LLC also owns the property with, with the easement next door.
That is correct.
Do they, so I presume they own the property that the easement goes to?
That is correct.
Is that the development behind this house?
To the west.
Okay.
So it's a single residential lot to the west.
The, the reason I'm wondering is zoning ordinance used to say if you had a non-conforming lot, and it was adjacent to another property owned by the same people, they should be annexed to each other. I don't know if the ordinance currently says that or not.
I don't think that makes sense with two residences.
Kelly, are you able to speak to that?
I would have to look up that exact provision, but the, in this case, these lots are built with single-family homes. They're not vacant.
Mm-hmm. No more questions?
I would entertain, do we need a motion to open a public hearing? Yes, I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Make a motion to open a public hearing?
Support.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing, none. Open a public hearing. If you have any comments on this application, come to the podium and state your name and address into the microphone. You'll have five minutes.
My name is Cynthia Coke. I own 717 North Shore Drive, which is on the-
Could you please move the mic closer to your mouth?
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Coke. I live and own 717 North Shore Drive, which boards this property on the north and west. So my question about, really is for clarity about the easement. So the easement, there's a little bit of history here, which is recorded in the city records, that my husband and I sold part of the property to 713 in order to increase their backyard, and we went through some roundabouts with the easement. And I was interested, and you said that, that they owned the easement. Maybe I could have an explanation of the easement and how that works, because the 721 owns the easement behind their property, and then there's an easement behind my property, which I think is, I don't know who owns that, actually. I don't know how that works. I've seen two different maps. One has an L shape, and one doesn't have an L shape. The L shape seems to be including the easement, and the other property cuts off at the easement. So that's really my question, is clarity around the easement and how that works. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else have comments on this application? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any discussion before we move into the nine items? All right.
I guess I do have a question for staff. With potential request for a variance in front of us, do the easements impact that request for a variance?
So, the easement that Mr. Seaguard referred to is the easement, is an ingress egress easement on the driveway, not an easement on the north side of the property. I don't know if you all can see this.
The driveway's on the south side.
Yes. So this is the easement here that was being referred to. This, you can see this is the survey of the property, and you can see the L shape that we talked about previously. The, the aerial, the GIS imaging is not correct, and I know that our GIS tech is working with the county to have that corrected.
And that easement is owned by the other home?
I'm not aware of an easement on the north side. I'm only aware of the easement on the south side. It's outside of the property, and I don't see another easement on the survey. I don't see another easement that would be impacted by this variance request.
Okay, thank you.
Looking at the map, it looks to me like it sometime in the past, this property acquired about 10 feet on the north side from the neighbor, and that may account for the weird shape.
Yes.
Any other discussion or questions? All right, well, we'll run into the nine items. Item number one, there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question that do not generally apply to other properties in the same zoning district. Exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions include, we have our list of ABCs, such as exceptional narrowness, shallowness, topography, and by reason of the use or development of the property immediately adjoining the property in question whereby the literal enforcement of the requirements of this ordinance would involve practical difficulties. Discussion on whether or not we believe that requirement for number one is met.
I would state that it is met due to the size and shape of the property, and also under item C, that the easement is an issue on that side. The use of that property for the access easement would certainly involve practical difficulties.
Yes, I agree. And for our new members of the board and the audience, just a reminder that in order for us to consider granting a variance, all nine items must be met. That is required by state law. Correct, Kelly?
Yes.
Item number two, that the condition or situation of the specific piece of property for which the variance is sought is not so general or recurrent in nature as to make reasonably practical the formulation of a general regulation for such conditions or situations. That would mean that this isn't common. There aren't a lot of parcels, properties like this with this specific situation. Do we believe that has been met?
Yes.
Yes.
Item three.
I will state.
Go ahead, Mr. Bemis.
There are many very small properties on the north side due to quiet land trades and also the way it was platted back before there was any zoning ordinance. It would be very difficult to write an ordinance that would deal with those situations.
I concur. That's the best way to look at it, at least by case.
Good, good observation. Number three, that such variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right, similar to that possessed by other properties in the same zoning district and in the vicinity. The possibility of increased financial return shall not of itself be deemed sufficient to warrant a variance. Has that been met?
Yes, I believe that is.
Number four, that strict compliance with the requirements of this ordinance would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose, or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome or impractical. Do we believe number four has been met?
Yes, due to the foundation issues, stairs, non-conforming.
And the size of the lot for them to rebuild would-
Yeah.
Yes, agree. Number five, the variance will not be significantly detrimental to adjacent property and the surrounding neighborhood. Any comments on number five? Do we believe that has been met?
It would not significantly change the use of the property.
Right. Really not changing the non-conformity of the house on the property, so.
And, yeah, with the same size footprint, too, as well, and looking at the drawings, it's, it's not, you know, I think, change.
So an example of that not being met would be to greatly expand the footprint and encroach further, increasing the non-conformity. Number six, the variance will not impair the intent and purpose of this ordinance. Do we agree? Yes, or no? Has that been met, number six?
I agree, just on the fact that, once again, these are all case-by-case basis, based on very odd lot sizes that have come up over the years.
Yes, it won't.
Yeah, it won't.
Yes. Don't tell my fifth-grade grammar teacher.
I do have a question. So when a property in, like, this type of, and I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I'm not sure which, which point this, I think- So, when a property in, like, this type of, and I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I'm not sure which point this, I think it would, I want to say it before we get to the end. When a property is demolished and it eliminates the footprint, and does that eliminate the legally non-conforming status? And so, to rebuild, would they have to comply with the?
Yes.
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 That's why they're seeking the variance at this point.
Right.
Yes, even if they exactly, totally, one hundred percent, they would still need a variance.
And if I can provide a little bit of additional insight, it doesn't eliminate the non-conformity of the lot itself. So, there were dimensional, structural, non-conformities with the existing structure on the lot, but additionally, the lot itself is non-conforming.
Yeah.
And so, in demolishing the structure, you're right on track that we, that at that point, the build should comply with the dimensional standards of the ordinance, but the lot itself remains non-conforming because it is small.
Right, right, okay.
It would be harder to get a variance if there were, if it were a legally conforming lot. There was more to work with there, yeah.
If they were to tear down everything to the foundation and build up, I suppose they wouldn't have to worry about it. But then if the foundation collapsed, it would be kind of a shame.
Right, right. And you said on North Shore, there are many, many situations like this.
In that part of town, yes. On Park Street, they have.
I mean, in the, that area, that ward.
It was kind of helter-skelter. I worked with contractor one time, many, many years over there. And there are a lot of houses that anymore, contractor would lose his license for building them the way that some of those houses were built.
This is a good example of an application for a variance in this situation.
You said this is.
This is a good example of the application.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Number seven, that the variance requested is the minimum amount necessary to overcome or mitigate the difficulty. Do we believe number seven has been met?
Yes.
Yes.
Number eight, the immediate practical difficulty causing the need for the variance request was not created by any affirmative action of the applicant. And for our newer members, that would mean that the applicant themselves have created the difficulty and the situation and brought them here today. Do we believe that has, that requirement has been met? That the applicant did not create this situation for themselves?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and item nine missing from the packet.
The new zoning ordinance has only eight standards. Yes, no, you're all set. The ordinance before, there was a final standard that was removed when the zoning ordinance was adopted. It was not necessary.
Then that's been met, I suppose. All right, any other questions or comments? Would entertain a motion?
I'd make a motion to grant the variance request for 713 North Shore as listed.
Would you want to include that all conditions necessary are met and all legal requirements such as permits?
Yeah, I would, yes.
Do we have support?
Support.
All in favor, we should do a roll call, actually. Samantha, can you take a roll call, please? Gruber?
Yes.
Kupiaras?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Balaiki?
Yes.
Bemis?
Yes.
Timmer?
Yes.
Burles? Yes. Motion carries. It's been moved and supported. I'm sorry, those are my notes. You've been approved. I've never sat here before, so thanks for bearing with me. All right, that brings us to item number eight, I believe, Commissioner comments. And we'll start with Mr. Balaiki.
I guess a common question to you, Kelly, the three people that spoke on behalf of the, on the non-agenda item issue, what, whose jurisdiction will that fall under?
So, there has been an application in front of the Planning Commission, a request to rezone 120 baseline. And so, that is where those comments are coming from. And the Planning Commission held a public hearing, and the Planning Commission will hold another public hearing. We are waiting for some additional information from the applicant team, from the development team, and then we will notice another public hearing, and it will be back in front of the Planning Commission and ultimately in front of City Council.
Great, and congratulations to Mr. Timmer, who was nominated. Thank you.
Mr. Gruber?
All right, and I, just to dovetail on that, because that was one of my notes down there, so. I wouldn't say there's a zero percent chance that that would be in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals, but it may down the road, somehow, there might be a small chance it would be here. But everyone has an opportunity to speak and to speak on camera, so I'm glad people came out. Brandy did a really nice job of running the meeting tonight.
Thank you for saying that. Appreciate you.
And then welcoming Lisa and it's Amy. And Amy, and our two elected chair and co-chair tonight. And then I would like to say that the size of the home tonight is very refreshing, because at one point in time, council thought every single home in South Haven was going to be at the maximum height and in the maximum size. And if you go around the city, there are many, 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 many homes that are being built that just are not. This is a particular situation, and if you look at the drawings and go by the home, it's like, this is very appropriate. And it's good to get these really nice in front of us. This is what I'd like to do more of, as opposed to the ones that are difficult. But I'm here to do the difficult job if required. That's it. Thank you.
All right, we'll go to Lisa, it's Beck. Is that pronounced correctly?
No, Lisa Kupiaras.
Kupiaras, sorry.
Lisa Beck is, Lisa Beck is another Lisa.
I'm so sorry.
Lisa V. I'm Lisa K. Well, I'm happy to be here. I thought as an alternate, I would be rarely called into duty because I, anytime I've watched ZBA, everybody has been there. So, I am glad to be here and happy to serve as long as necessary. And thank you for welcoming me. And this is just one of my pet peeves. If people could, when they speak, please get their mic up to their mouth. I know I'm in the audience quite a bit, and it is, it's really hard to hear sometimes. And I realize when people are at the podium, there's a little bit of nervousness maybe, and they forget to do that. But for the benefit of the audience and the wide audience that is watching, if you can have your mics up to your, right up to your mouth, it's really helpful to be able to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, and welcome, and apologies for that, a little nervous under these spotlights. I didn't know that. Lisa K., I've seen the signs.
You did okay.
Miss Snipper?
You're soft spoken.
Well, Brandy, you are doing a great job. Don't worry about that. And I'm just happy to be here, so, and congratulations, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair.
Welcome, Amy. Mr. Bemis?
Alternate is a really important position, and I'm glad you're here. Probably a lot of people who aren't on the board don't realize that if an alternate gets called to a meeting and that issue drags over into other meetings, they're stuck, just like a juror, until it's done.
I did realize that.
So, that, I do have to say, though, the other item I was talking about, I'm a little troubled by ownership when we have firms that I can't find saying that they're the owners. And maybe there's an email somewhere, but the name on the email isn't here. And there are the occasional articles where somebody has found that their property has been taken, including at the courthouse. So, I don't want to be a part of one of those issues.
Very fair, and I agree. And congratulations, Mr. Vice Chair.
I'll think about that.
Think you've already done it.
Mr. Timmer?
So, I would just like to welcome Lisa and welcome Amy. Generally, you know, we meet a lot. The last time was January, so. But I understand from Kelly, we're going to meet a little more often. I want to thank everyone for their confidence, and we'll see how this goes. And Brandy, you did a great job.
Thank you, and congratulations. Be happy to have you in this seat. All right, so I just have a couple of comments. I want to remind everyone that the ZBA does not create or suggest zoning changes. We can only decide on the applications that come before us. Tonight was a good example of a good application where a variance was needed, and it was pretty straightforward. So, good learning example for our new members, for sure. I also wanted to say Commissioner Runkel will very much be missed by me, and I would like to thank him for his guidance during my first term on ZBA, for his service to the city of South Haven. Our community is extremely fortunate to have him as an involved citizen, and I hope to continue to see his experience leveraged in the future. Again, welcome Lisa K. and Amy Nichols. Thank you to the staff and community members. And I definitely hope that I filled the chairman's very big shoes tonight and ran a smooth meeting, because Chairman Runkel, again, did a very good job during the first three years of my term, and it's part of what made me want to sign up for a second term here. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, we are adjourned.